Okay. Colleen Davis?
Here.
Sean Kaser?
Here.
Nick Kennedy?
Yes.
Jim Moore?
Here.
Leslie Perkins?
Here.
Bob Walter?
Mm-hmm.
Kelly's with us this evening because Renee is on vacation, so thank you. All right, council, you received the minutes from the February 24th meeting. Do you have any comments or a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. From February 24th. Okay. Colleen Davis?
Yes.
Sean Kaser?
Yes.
Nick Kennedy?
Yes.
Jim Moore?
Yes.
Leslie Perkins?
Yes.
Bob Walter?
Yes.
We also have current expenses written from 3/7/13. And we'll do our best thing to... Yep, Renee here. Any questions? Any questions?
Do you accept expenditures?
Did you sign?
Second.
Okay, Colleen Davis?
Yes.
Sean Kaser?
Yes.
Nick Kennedy?
Yes.
Jim Moore?
Yeah.
Leslie Perkins?
Yes.
Bob Walter?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, before we get into the rest of the meeting, I wanted to just share that I was contacted by Kate Wheel, who is from London High School, is an athletic trainer there, and she's with Nationwide Hospital as well, their sports medicine, and asked if I could do a proclamation that March is National Athletic Training Month. And I've done that for them. And Sarah is here this evening, and I want to give it to her. Thank her for reaching out to me. And he's robbed to go grab a photo real quick, so, okay.
Two, one.
Yeah, it's up if you could. There you go. Thank you. Encouraging Plain City residents to get involved in athletics. Sarah, don't feel like you need to stay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
You too. All right, council, I asked briefly to the public records training that Yount River State put on, and I gave you a sunshine logbook. I had sent you a previous email, and it is mandatory for elected officials to attend unless they... you assign a designate. And so, if you want to go individually, you can. At some point next year, we'll want to do a designate. Renee has gone previous years for everyone. But if you're not going, we need to do that so that during your term, you at least... somebody represents you there, or you go.
Do we have to individually designate Renee?
If you're not going to attend, yes, in a public meeting, we have to.
I'd like to designate Renee to cover me.
Okay.
Do we have to do it individually, or can we make it collective?
We can make it collective if you'd like, or we can do it individually. If you think you want to attend, then you can wait till last year of your term.
I did, I want to box it in with council members. I'd make it collective in case I wanted to go.
Is it just once a year?
Once a term.
It's... no, I mean, it's held once a year.
Yes, once a year. Right, nice. Okay, so we'll bring it up next year before the training, and let you decide. Can you make note in the minutes this that how Renee put down the calendar for us? I have time. Thank you. All right. Now, so I told you I would check with David Kell from Madison County about the Madison County CIC. And he can oversee that program, but in that conversation, our CRAs, in that conversation, a couple other things came up, so I want to make sure that we're clear with that before we move forward with... it's on our first reading, and we'll just hold off until another meeting until he gets some answers. One of the questions that came up is that we've always... it's been 250, as we shared with you before, in Madison County. That's Chamber dues. Chamber and CIC has never been separated until now. And so now it's separated, and they have a specific person for CIC. And they are now going to work on a structure for the cost of that. As we shared before, Union County is $3,000. That's everything. Madison will increase. They just don't know what that will be yet. So, let you know when they know.
What exactly is it that we... what is our benefit?
To be participating in the CIC?
Right.
They can assist us in any step of the way. Us and, of course, our code as we get into economic things that they want to pursue or we want to pursue, that they can assist us with. Various times throughout the years, we've gotten some funding from them. They've assisted us with, like, the Tier One process. We got $10,000 came from the commissioners in Madison County to help us make application for that when we were trying to get dollars to improve the Uptown. Those dollars went for the initial layout of what it might look like, what's that called?
Development plan?
Now, do you... The what the... the streets gate.
Streets gate, yes.
For the Uptown development thing, yeah. Yes, and so various things like that, they're there and available to assist us if we want help. Any thoughts that you heard when you said...
Yeah, they also do a lot with Columbus 2020 and any projects that come through Columbus 2020, which is a NED management tool through, like, all of central Ohio. They will... I get emails pretty frequently from David Kell's office about a company that may be looking for a very specific land, site, building, things like that. And if he does identify something in Plain City, then they pretty much drive that through. Unfortunately, right now, a lot of the commercial development, they're looking for already existing buildings and space, so... But in the last CIC meeting, they did say that those inventories are dwindling, so eventually, some of these bigger companies coming in are going to have to do some building and structuring of their own. So they help manage that as well.
So, they're there as a resource for us. And what he would... has the ability to do is to oversee the community reinvestment areas that we have in the Uptown and out on 42. And that's just a tool that an entity can use to help cut some costs as they bring business here.
If we went with Madison and it was on the Union side, would they still help us with that piece?
Yes.
But we'd have to convert our CRA documentation to show Madison County as the lead.
Which he... and that's the other piece he's checking. It appears that some of that was done.
It was?
It was done when Sean was still here. So, we're just verifying that the paperwork is all correct and we're right in that process. So, we'll let you know. Any other questions? I have time.
So you're looking for feedback from him on a couple specific questions?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Renee did... oh, Renee. Kelly, did Renee leave anything for us? On the ordinances or resolutions? Okay. All right, we'll get to that in a minute. All right, Ben, Chief Kell.
Hello. Just have a few things. The cruiser was delivered, the new one, on Saturday. So, we'll have to get that scheduled for striping and to be equipped. So I'd anticipate usually about a month till they get on the road. I've been conducting and completing up the officers' evaluations, their annual evaluations, so that's almost done. And last week, Officer Howard attended a drug epidemic course. And I attended the monthly Union County Advisory Board meeting. And then also, you probably heard on Wednesday, at 9:50 in the morning, we had the statewide tornado emergency drill. So, I would take that opportunity to remind everyone. And if the press could please remind a note to the residents to sign up for the Code Red weather warning. This is a perfect opportunity this time of year, as we're approaching the spring weather. And that's all I have.
Do you not have any alarms still on?
Yes. The alarms.
Should we put that in the news letter? The Code Red in the news letter?
We have, before we can again, you know, the spring.
Excuse me, chief, what training did you attend?
I did an Officer Howard attended...
Drug epidemic?
Drug epidemic.
Questions? Thank you. All right, Mr. Kell.
Let everybody know that we will begin tearing down the old restrooms at Pastime Park on Thursday, March 13th. We'll probably make our way down there probably about 7:30 if anybody wants to see it. We've ordered some additional hardware for our water sewer trash billing system to improve some efficiencies and upgrade some equipment there. I met with a person responsible for the administration of Moving Ohio Forward. This is a program that allows residential property owners the opportunity to have blighted home torn down, and all costs associated with it are covered by the Moving Ohio Forward program. Should we have any residents interested in the program, please have them contact me as soon as possible as money's tied up pretty quickly. It's a very simple, one-form document that they have to fill out. It takes care of asbestos inspection and abatement if needed, tears the house down, grades it, cedes it, all at no cost to the property owner. I also, today, met with the county commissioners, trying to get a bug in their ear about some CDBG opportunities. So, didn't hear anything for sure about that, but it's always good to start that conversation.
What does that stand for?
Community Development Plot Grant.
It's the money that we can get that we have to match to do infrastructure and those kind of things, the big eye-ticket items.
And unless there's any other questions, that's all I have.
We've got one other thing. Kevin and I gave a airphone to the Lieutenant Governor and Representative at the Columbus Business Association meeting last week. That's all.
About?
You name it. We did a good coverage.
Yeah.
ODOT, EPA, local government funding, grants.
Good.
As-built five.
The response?
He was dumbfounded. Stupified.
Well, they need to hear it, so, good. Thank you. All right, President Pro Ten.
The only thing tonight, Mary, I just wanted to make sure everybody on council takes a look at the letter we received from Evergreen Land Company. Just opened it right before the meeting started. So basically, from Evergreen wanting to know, or just basically stating they did everything they should have done, or sorry, it didn't work out. So that's their position.
Well, then that's either changed since that letter, so...
Do you want me to touch on it?
Sure.
Just briefly, I did... I've been in conversations with Mr. Shepherd and Mr. Andrews over the last week, trying to do what we can and make sure this doesn't go by the wayside and everybody's hard work goes undone. Had a face-to-face sit-down with them today. I thought it went quite well. There's still some things we need to work out, but they are going to bring a proposal, informal proposal, to planning and zoning for next Wednesday. So, we are still talking. We have a lot of work to do, but we're still talking.
Great, thank you.
That's all that I have.
Anything for Park at this point?
We haven't set a time for that. We should probably do that sometime.
I'm going to email you about that.
We'll get something in, let you know at the next meeting as we head into spring. Hope.
Hey. Mr. Kell.
I sent out an email today regarding, I think it was the statute that... what can I say, statute ordinance that Sean was interested in. Did anybody have a chance to look at it? I mailed it out. Just wanted to, you know, basically, there's a number of different provisions that we already have in our ordinances with regard to trespass and criminal damaging, things of that nature, that we have available if we wanted to, in instances where people are damaging public property or altering public property that we could wonder. However, this one is a little bit more specific, what I drafted. And so, if you had a chance to look at it, basically, addresses not only physical harm to the property, but storm replacement of personal property on public property. And again, the, I guess, the caveat to that is for a permanent or indefinite period of time. So, you know, if somebody goes up and puts their chair down, their fold-up chair in the park so they can watch a ballgame, doesn't mean that they're in violation of the ordinance. And it makes it a minor misdemeanor upon consultation with the chief over this issue that we want to make sure that it stays a minor misdemeanor, but financial harm only. Now, again, I leave this up to you guys. There are other provisions that arguably we could enforce in other areas. This is much more specific and gets right to... it's a little bit more specific as to the effects on public property.
My only comment is the better definition between harm and alleged infringement by a member of the public.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments? We can discuss it now if you'd like. Did it achieve what you were hoping it would?
Yeah, I'm pretty... I was pretty happy with it. This, you said, is all new, or this is...
It'll be a completely new section. Because right now, we go up to 541.10, so this is 541.11. And again, I can clarify, I think I understand what Mr. Walter is suggesting, that there is under C1, it would be caused physical harm to public property. The other two do not address physical harm, but I can specify, yeah, towards the end of each of those, two and three, that regardless of whether placement or storage or whatever results in harm to the property, something along those lines.
Yeah, an assertion of intent to do good...
Right.
Can't be an excuse.
Right.
Is this enforcing those police powers or is this through zoning?
We enforce it on police powers. Okay.
Do we want to include a penalty to have some kind of... You know, there was a cleanup cost associated with the bench, for example, and...
Restitution cost.
Yeah, something along those lines, that they're responsible for either the value of the damage or the removal of the property or whatever it may be.
Yeah, that was my thought, too, if there was a certain time and maybe put, you know...
Jim, what are your thoughts on that, as far as, did that move us into a different direction if we put a restitution cost on that?
I think that would be something that would have to be discussed with the court sense at that level of offense, because I don't know if you can create penalties beyond what the state would allow.
Right. And that's the only... And again, the things that have been discussed with the chief is certainly, if we move something above a minor misdemeanor and we move it to a misdemeanor of first degree, fourth degree, or whatever, if it's a jailable offense, the village is responsible for the jailing costs. And so, we've got to... we don't necessarily want to be able to be cutting off our nose despite our face in a situation like this. So if we impose some kind of civil penalty that would exceed what the Ohio Revised Code defines as a minor misdemeanor, now are we stepping into the territory where we could be putting ourselves in some jeopardy cause?
Excuse me, I think it's important to remember, too, just because you have a criminal law does not mean that you don't have a tour, a civil violation as well, and that you couldn't... If there was some type of destructive damage done, the village still couldn't pursue civilly for those cost in attorney fees and et cetera.
And what I could do is...
Lack of time and money and that kind of...
Right. And what I could do is, I guess, in looking at this, the way it's drafted right now, it says, "Whosoever violates this section is guilty of vandalism of public property, minor misdemeanor." Whoever violates this section is subject to a fine not exceeding $150 in accordance with ordinance 501.02D1. I could put a section three in there. This section, you know, something along, it does not exclude someone from potential civil liability for any damages caused to property.
And another issue as well, someone destroys a property to the point that it raises to a felony or such, then that would come in. That code already exists.
Right.
This is something, from my understanding, the language has created something new that's not in the state code. It would be something pertains just to the village. So, that section of law, if someone goes and violates a state law, then... and if it needs upgraded to that level, then of course, there would be restitution calls to the court.
Would it change anything if we made, say, for example, $150 per day? Yeah, that would change, because then all of a sudden, you're not talking about a minor misdemeanor penalty anymore. But again, then all of a sudden, it becomes a zoning issue, but that zoning is for your land, not for our land, for the most part, for our zoning penalties. But I think that, you know, having a separate civil harm of this would probably be productive. If, you know, any damages, physical damage or consequential costs, attorney fees, et cetera.
What would be comparable, like a parking ticket? I mean, what does a parking ticket run? I mean, what is this on the same level as?
It's a minor misdemeanor, which is punishable up to $150 fine, so... And that's... and we don't set the court calls. The court sets those, and right now, that's what the fines are for that, the $150. It's not a jailable offense.
So we'd like to make those changes, then, maybe, and take a look at it next time? Is that kind of what we're thinking there? Yeah, I think it's... I don't think there's a rush, but it's something we probably just keep chucking on.
The other issue is, I'm arranging a meeting with Mr. Hickman to talk a little bit more about some of the prior issues with the Frank Lee property. You know, I have a pretty good understanding, they originally constructed the property, they did not put the drainage pipes in place in accordance with the design plans. And subsequent, they did some radial work and subsequent litigation, but at the end of the day, they never came back to us and provided us with as-built plans showing where it is. So we don't know what's under the ground, so to speak, or where it is. And if we don't know that, we can't very well accept it for something that we're going to be ultimately responsible for the maintenance of, if they didn't do it right, with all the plans. So that's why I want to meet with Mr. Hickman and verify that my understanding of it is right, but that's, you know, we've got a box of documents that Kevin's given me, and we've gone through and looked at all the photographs and the plans, et cetera.
What's the normal procedure there for any house being built? Do we ultimately have to approve the plans?
They would provide it to us for our approval or acceptance of the line that they placed, but that would be part of, you know, the best example would be, as we're looking at now with Oak Grove, they have a design plan of where the pipes, where the drainage, you know, storm sewers are going to be placed. There are going to be separate, smaller plans showing, you know, depth, what kind of pipe, things of that nature. And then, that's the plan, they put it in according to plan, and then you have an as-built showing exactly how it ended up going in. And we don't have that. And so we can't accept, you know, let's say that they put it in a different direction, or let's say they put it onto... I mean, as I understand it from looking at the plan of what we believe happened after the fact, it looks like a significant portion of kind of a remedial wing wall that they put out there, a wall to protect the foundation, actually extends well beyond the easement. So it's actually, we can't accept that because it's not even part of our property, it's part of his property. And that's one problem. But also, the bigger problem is, again, I don't know for certain that's where it is, because we don't have a verified as-built that's been signed off by an engineer. And he's had difficulties, and I understand his frustration, he's trying to go back through Manor Homes to try to get verification and get as-built plans. I have, out of courtesy, placed a couple phone calls to their attorney that went unresponded, but, you know, at the end of the day, that's not my job to track that down. That's... they litigated that issue, they reached a settlement. Mr. Lee received $50,000 in that settlement, as well as an agreement for Manor Homes to remedy the situation.
And release for us.
And we had a release as well. So, you know, I don't mean to be crass, but it's really not our problem until they can present something to us that says, "Can you please accept this? This is the way it was built, and I don't know what else we can do." I can't recommend to the village, yes, we should accept something, when we don't know what's in the ground. Because if it's not in their right, we could be taking on a liability. And that's not something we have the... we should have the responsibility to do, when it wasn't put in right in the first place. So that's fundamentally what the problem is. And, you know, I understand his situation, I feel bad for it, but that's something that should have been buttoned up with the previous settlement, or whatever settlement he had with Manor Homes.
When the house was built, was there something that we signed off on saying things were acceptable?
The original design, the original plans.
Okay, and then after we signed off on the plans, is there another... are we involved in the process after that, after they come back and say, "We're done"? Do we then certify that?
Does the city approve what's put in? Like, do we have something?
We were supposed to, but what had happened was, it got to the point where it was going to be acceptable, but Mr. Lee and... there's some factual issues here as to who knew what and when about this pipe and where it was placed, but it was placed too close to the foundation. And we wouldn't accept it because it wasn't in conformity with the plan. And so, they then did a change to it, but it still wasn't in conformity. And then they ended up in litigation over that. And then as part of the litigation, my predecessor, Mr. McCarthy, had sent a letter saying, "Look, we can't... the village can't do anything until we have the as-built. We can't accept anything, and here's a certain number of conditions that have to be met." And at the end of that litigation, Mr. Lee settled with Manor Homes. Again, they received $50,000 in payment, and also, they had an order to where, as part of the agreed agreement, that they would have the engineering and everything redone and done appropriately. Well, that took place, but we never... nobody ever came to us and said, "Here's the as-built plan, the way it should be built, we'd like you to accept it now. Because of our settlement agreement, we now have this thing done in accordance with the original plan, or something that would otherwise be acceptable to the village for us to take." And they never did that. And so that kind of... and then they buried everything, and then that's kind of where we're at. So we were never put in the position of saying, we never had the ask. They never said, "Hey, will you accept this now? Here it is, and here's the engineering plan affirming that this is the placement as-built."
So we don't do inspections or anything? We wait for them to bring the as-built?
We wait.
Do we do the inspections?
Right, and then again, this is a very unusual situation because of the litigation, and not only just because of the litigation, but because of the prior kind of do-overs and some of the stuff that they did out there. It wasn't a typical situation where we go in, where John or even at that point in time, maybe Pat Hickman would have been taking a look at the lines to see where everything was going. And I, as I understand it, Pat Hickman was not agreeable to some of the remedies that they had put in. And so he wasn't willing to sign off on it at that point. But how it ended up and how it was finalized, they didn't come to us with as-built saying, "Would you accept it?" And right now, they're saying, my understanding from through his counsel, is that they want to sell the property, but they're having difficulty because obviously, they have to do real property disclosures about the condition or whether lines have been accepted, et cetera. And again, we can't just accept something if it hasn't been, if we don't know what we're accepting. So, you know, again, I think the village, I mean, we're going to... I'm going to sit down with Pat and talk to him and go through some of these documents and to see if there's anything we can piece together. But at the end of the day, I don't know that there's anything that's going to change my view on what can be done. I know that, you know, certainly, the village will... We always try to work with people, and try to make sure that we get resolution of issues to help folks, but, you know, we're not just going to blanketly take on a liability just to help somebody else. I mean, we wouldn't do that to anybody else. We're going to treat everybody fairly and equally. And we can't just go around and, just because you stuck something in the ground and you want to sell the property, you know, that's not our responsibility to accept that as is, so... So I will report back to you guys at the next meeting as to where things stand. But that's where we are for now.
And the Union County Building Department is also involved in things like that, as well as a project engineer. And so there's a lot of people that have oversight, and as Paul said... And so there's a lot of people that have oversight, and as Paul said, Pat would not sign off, because it, when it started, the first time around, it was not in the right place. So, they'd already had a fight up against the easement, and that was an issue, so.
So if they don't get approval, how are they able to sell the property to begin with?
They never get a word.
It was so-
Yeah, exactly.
How many of them rolled this?
I don't know, I don't know what they did on the title work to get that accomplished, I have no idea. The last issue, and it's something that we're going to be coming up with, I guess, I can wait until new business, or just briefly discuss it right now, is with regards to the, the last thing on the list, the proposed ordinance, amending our posting requirements, as Ms. Davis brought up at one of the previous meetings. I guess Yoder's had not been publicly, or, you know, basically if you were asking for the postings, they'd have to dig around in the back room and look under boxes or something to try to find where the resolutions had been dropped off, so they weren't really being very accessible. So we're going to make some changes to that, we're also correcting to our ordinance to reflect security national bank instead of citizens. And we're going to do the posting instead of out on, because of some of the documents, as Renee brought up last time, some of our ordinances, or when we have multiple ordinances, it's difficult to get them posted up there, where somebody can actually see the entire ordinance out on the, on the placard out front. So we'll make them available in the fiscal office, and we're also going to put them online. And I believe that that complies with the ORC requirements for making them reasonably available for the citizens to be able to view the public business. And that's all I have to report.
Great, thanks. And I would also say that the, the new ordinance that you're going to tweak for me stuff on property, we can also put a note in the newsletter and have it be accessible online that way, that it can let people know this is in place now and paying attention. Okay, thank you. Colleen?
I don't have the news for next week, I'm going to miss next week. We'll just talk about-
Have you seen the agenda? I don't think we have.
No, John doesn't have one.
I have a question, I know, at least as it relates to Oak Grove. In my neighborhood, when Manor built the division, they took all the topsoil out, shipped it out, and then they threw saw on top of clay. Unless I water and feed basically constantly, the yard looks terrible. I literally, several years ago, tore out all my saw, I put four tons of topsoil back on the front yard, but when you walk from my front yard to my back yard, you can tell it's just night and day. Do you know if Oak Grove, if they plan to do the same, take out the topsoil?
Never seen a landscaping plan yet, so.
I think it's a valid question, since Mr. Shepherd owns this sod farm.
I had the same thing happen, Rose City, we did the same thing.
It's a nightmare for you, forever, at that point.
We had too many rocks in there.
Trees don't grow, and, yeah.
Something that we can pay attention to when we go through the landscaping there. Good point, okay. BCA?
Nothing that I know of.
And anything else on CIC?
No, I had Mrs. Union County CIC due to scheduling conflict.
Personnel findings?
Can't take tonight's meeting, you know, I'd like to reschedule for five thirty on March twenty-fourth, if that's acceptable.
That's our next meeting, I'm, I have a scheduled vacation for that time, we scheduled it many, many months ago, so I will not be available.
Let's check and see what the next available date is. Would you be willing to do it non-council meeting night?
Of course.
For the final week? So, um, I just- How about Tuesday, the eighteenth, at six o'clock?
I'll be on Blue Jackets game.
You have BCA on the nineteenth, planning zoning.
Are you open to that?
Yes.
You're the key, are you?
No, I'm on March.
Yes, there's a P and Z. There's a P and Z, nineteen.
Twenty is Upgo, not working real good, folks. Seventeenth?
I can do that.
So let's do Monday, the seventeenth, at six o'clock. We'll do six, if we're not doing it, can we?
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, she'll be back, I just don't know if she's available.
While we have our calendars out, I won't be here on the twenty-fourth either. Anybody else going on spring break, I'm just thinking of, Nick and I are both, if anyone else is-
Where are you guys going? We might go with you.
I don't want to say out loud, because it'll make everyone Bahamas, so.
Oh.
Are you staying with Atlantis?
I don't want to. No, I want to prove you, so to be- So everybody else will be here, so we'll be good for forum-wise, if-
Really?
Sucker.
I'll be gone later.
Oh, okay.
In the warm weather.
Bob, what time is it? What time, which is it?
Six.
I guess they won't be at the production, but they're supposed to. No, I'll bring that up a little bit.
Okay, um, so seventeenth, it came up, and did you say five thirty?
Six.
Six. Okay, thanks. All right. Jim, anything new on fire?
There is a light.
There is one.
Five thirty.
All right.
Do you have a cover? Do you need me? You sweet talker, you.
All right. Can we take the RV off the end of there? Okay, um, take, we're going to take Tiff off of pending until we have more answers from Valentine. And then we're ready for old business. We have third reading of Resolution four fourteen, which are the park and pool rate adjustments. Motion? Motion to pass third reading of Resolution four fourteen.
On the fly.
Colleen Davis?
Yes.
Sean Kizer?
Yes.
Nick Kennedy?
Yes.
Jim Moore?
Yes.
Leslie Perkins?
Yes.
Bob Walter? And third reading of Resolution five fourteen, which is the deals dot com agreement.
We'll do approve third reading of Resolution five fourteen.
Colleen Davis?
Yes.
Sean Kizer?
Yes.
Nick Kennedy?
Yes.
Jim Moore? Leslie Perkins?
Yes.
Bob Walter?
Yes.
Third reading of Resolution six fourteen, Ohio deferred comp agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second. Colleen Davis?
Yes.
Sean Kizer?
Yes.
Nick Kennedy?
Yes.
Jim Moore?
Yes.
Leslie Perkins?
Yes.
Bob Walter?
Yes.
And the second reading of Resolution seven fourteen, twenty fourteen permanent appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
She can have it.
Okay, Colleen Davis?
Yes.
Sean Kizer?
Yes.
Nick Kennedy?
Yes.
Jim Moore?
Yes.
Leslie Perkins?
Yes.
Bob Walter?
Yes.
Okay, when I'm moving into new business, we are going to wait another till next meeting for the Mexican County CIC agreement. And we have the first reading of Resolution eighteen.
Can you pass it on to everybody? Oh, did you? I am, yeah. I have them over here at the next second one.
The B fourteen, which is a resolution accepting lowest bid-
Yeah.
Lowest bid bidder for the cleaning and painting of the village water towers.
What was the bid?
Two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
And it gets us, what exactly?
It'll get the inside and the outside of the Bigelow Tower, which is right out here, and the interior of the Jefferson Tower.
What was it, two hundred?
Two forty-two, two fifty.
I don't know if anybody has looked at the contract. You may want to, I mean, just for your own information, take a look at some of the photographs of the existing ones.
They, when we, uh, when we did the-
Even council members, I don't think they-
Oh, okay. I don't have them with, are they included in the bid?
There's a two thousand and ten report that really elevated this in the minds of council, something that needs to be done.
And how long will this last, like, with maintenance, with upper maintenance?
They have-
About twenty years.
Should have been, should have been done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
And one of them looks like it on the outside, I think Bigelow looks good on the outside.
Jefferson's over here on the outside.
Yeah.
And what color are they going to paint?
Pink.
Pink.
Red and blue.
There's going to be, yeah, one's going to be red and one's for the blue.
Is this an opportunity to more, you know, identify Plain City?
Somebody did call one time and say, is the water tank, is the hot water tank out of water, because mine, I don't have it. Not everybody understands that.
Is the current, uh, current town logo going to be put on the towers too, or keep the black lettering?
Same as the other one.
Same as that one? Okay.
Is this an opportunity though, to do something unique that kind of further identifies who we are? I mean, we use this little tower on our paper, could we paint that on the tower, or just some idea?
Deco?
Colleen will do that.
We can certainly make any, we can make change orders.
These little things that make a community unique, instead of, you know, Plain City and black letters.
We could certainly make change orders, and I can get a bid, or a cost estimate for how much.
I mean, obviously, it's parade. I don't know, maybe painting, or-
The logo.
Or something unique that-
I don't think anybody lived here a hundred years ago like I did, but the water tower, right, that was red and white checked. And just everybody just, that was cool.
I always thought our website on there, which would be W W W, plaincityday, you know, dot com, would be a real good way to communicate.
That's a cool idea. And you think, we could sell advertising on it.
Yeah, for Ohio, and I believe the only-
It's now selling homes for Oak Grove. Please inquire.
Get there without topsoil.
They could put an address in sod farm on the outside.
All right, so, um, we have Resolution eight fourteen, accepting lowest bid, best bidder for the cleaning and painting of village water towers. How many, how many bids would you get?
We, we received two bids, however, the one was the, the person that got the bid, the full bid, had everything, he had the interior and exterior of Bigelow, but they were not the lowest bid on Jefferson. When we contacted the other company that won the bid on Jefferson and asked if they didn't get all of them, would their bids still stand? And they asked to be removed from the bid.
So Bob, would you, would you mention the, where the money's coming from, a quick?
Coming from the Water Capital Fund.
The line's on the outside.
I'm shy. So we're talking about the water tower.
Last time he comes.
So Bob, you were saying the money comes from out of what account?
I think it's in the Water Capital Fund.
Okay.
And I believe it's two hundred and forty-two, the Water Capital Fund right now is a little over three hundred thousand, my best memory.
Motion to approve, Resolution eight fourteen.
Colleen Davis?
Yes.
Sean Kizer?
Yes.
Nick Kennedy?
Yes.
Jim Moore?
Yes.
Leslie Perkins?
Yes.
Bob Walter? Okay, so, Julie, did you want to address council?
Nope.
Okay, just hanging out.
We're just hanging out.
Have you?
Nothing else to do.
Yeah.
I know, I know, I couldn't feel like I had the time.
Wait, you guys can be here for me? Anything else, council? Do you have any, anything going on? I like to ask, is there something going on in town we don't know?
The White Brothers Club?
Yeah, yes. I did have two things, one, I had, as a member of the Homeowners Association of Darby Estates, I had, several homeowners asked me if it's a parking violation for people to park in their driveways but on the sidewalk.
Yes.
Doesn't seem, you have several people who walk their dogs, and they say that, you know, that's a hassle, or having their kids ride on the sidewalk, certainly. In fact, when I was teaching Greg Reader, Roddy rode into a car and urged him to call us, if that's an issue, if they don't have a ability to speak. And then we walked over there and addressed it, and if it continues, then we'll take them horseback. I didn't think it was, because on Carriage, we had a sheriff, there was a sheriff crunch there, and I think he's always upset. The second thing I had was, I was looking at the hierarchy, the organizational hierarchy of some other municipalities, Dublin, Worthington, Columbus. They all have what's called an economic development director. I obviously understand the money situation in Plain City, that it's tight, but should we consider hiring somebody whose sole purpose is to engage businesses and try to get them to come to Plain City? The idea being, obviously, we'll spend money now, but, you know, hopefully, you know, in the future, bring in for future business, and future revenue, so we're not always in this, in this budget crunch.
There's a public-private initiative underway. Upgo has, one of their committees is Business Development, and to be part of a full-fledged member of the Main Street organization, they need to have a full-time Economic Development Director on staff. Neither Upgo or the village has the budget right now, so village, Upgo, the chambers are all trying to work together to figure out how to fill that void until money's available, which points well taken.
Well, I think Nick has a great idea. I mean, we need somebody to make Plain City a priority. Where Upgo's great, but they are just volunteers, they all have full-time jobs. I think we need somebody that will take this, well, like I said, we've got too many empty storefronts downtown.
I don't disagree.
And, you know, the mayor has even said that we sit between two counties. I don't think we're a priority to the Union County Chamber or the Madison. I think we need to get a dog into this fight, even if it's somebody paid part-time.
We had to show, yeah, we had to show them that we're willing to work at it, and that we're serious.
What do you think would be a reasonable amount to budget, in terms of, if it's full-time, in terms of salary plus fringe? If it's part-time, what you, what would you consider a reasonable budget limit? Mold, all broke, I would have a nice personal flag.
I think it's not my question.
I can get the comp analysis from work, I have a membership with my comp person that has that information for, specifically for city.
Just a couple of notes on that. That was a recommendation of the Plain City Development Committee sometime last year to hire an Economic Development Director specifically for Plain City, for that exact same reason, because we are the redheaded stepchild of both of the, the counties, simply because we're so far away from the county seats and we're kind of a shared entity. So that was a recommendation, knowing full well that that would take some funding. The other thing is, the economic- The other thing is, the Economic Development Committee for a town Plain City organization is just reorganizing after everything that had gone on with the changes in the counties and Sean Hughes leaving. So, we, we are looking, will be looking at some things that we might be able to do. But the, the point is that we are just volunteers, and we have to have the direction of the people who know exactly what they're doing, that have the funds, that know where the grants are, that know which way to, to send the, the funds, that sort of thing. So, of course, I would think it would be wonderful if we could get an Economic Development Director, but I know that the, the pitfalls there.
The funds are always going to be tight, and I understand Bob's point. I don't see anything changing in the near future, and near future meaning six, seven, eight, 10 years, unless we actually do something about it, or we get lucky and some big business goes where Renco used to be or something like that. But that's, we can't plan on that just falling out of the sky. This seems to me like something we pay upfront for, ultimately pays dividends in the future for years and years to come.
I agree with you 100%.
I don't disagree, it's just that it's finding the money that we're missing.
And one of those ways might be to solicit, a couple entities in the area. Tim Suter through First Energy has, supports other entities, so there's no reason we can't put our hat in the ring yet. Why not? Got a thousand dollars out of it for Upgo, so maybe now's the time to say, what else can you do? And how much? So, I do think there, there are ways to make it happen, I think, if we, certainly, we're going to have to come up with some of the money, but I think there might be some options otherwise as well, so.
Doesn't hurt to look. I mean, at the end of the day, it may not, it may be no, but it doesn't hurt to pursue it.
Yeah, yeah, if you can look at some of the data as far as employment, wages and earnings, that job classification, full-time, part-time, and maybe test different sized municipalities, that would really help. Because we could be, we could be, we may be assuming that it's not achievable, and it is, or we may be assuming just the opposite and kidding ourselves, so.
We may also want to look at other municipalities that may have part-time and look at those people to, to see, you know, we take the other part-time.
Yeah, we want to give them a full-time.
Yeah. A lot of people need them.
Governor calls that shared services.
It is.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Easter egg hunt has been set for the 12th at noon, rain dates the 19th.
Is it April 12? They're looking for volunteers to fill eggs.
Is it VFW set? Anything else going on that I know about?
In the newsletter, suggestions that Kelly sent out, it said something in there about yard sales and take down your signs, and it said, I know, just joking. But do we have anything on books, on zoning, that your regard to sale signs can only stay up so long? Because they don't, then people don't follow those.
I know, it's hard.
It covers political signs too.
Well, Christmas and the clock signs were up for six weeks after.
Yeah.
Or maybe that's something to mention in the newsletter, that they can only stay up so long.
It might be good to talk about in the newsletter as well, about blocking the sidewalk, did you know kind of thing.
Sure.
To get the word out that these people are concerned about. Because I didn't know it, I guess I never thought about it.
Were we putting in kind of financial summary in there?
No, I mean, if you're in your driveway, you can't.
For the end of 2013.
No, 20 pages of budget.
Oh, a summary in the newsletter. I can hear that. Let's see what we can get together.
I think the more we can involve our citizens and what's going on.
What are you talking, a summary of accounting expenses for 2013, or are you talking 14?
Or both. And also, on the clock, why are we, why don't we take bids for the water tower? We're not taking bids for the clock.
I hope you didn't spec it up, have you?
I think there's a clock.
We, the clock committee is actually meeting tomorrow to inspect, you know, go up there and actually get their eyes on the clock and come up with a game plan of what it needs, how it's going to be done, how much it's going to cost. And we'll have a better understanding of what direction we're going to go. Right now, it's, it's very preliminary, and we're not sure it has to come off or not come off, or whether it needs.
But isn't it, is it urgent?
Is it urgent?
Mm-hmm. Isn't it leaking on the gears?
At times, we've repaired some of that. There has been some water infiltrating, but it's certainly not as bad as it was, and it's.
Only when it rains.
And springs come.
You put some tape up there?
Yeah. Gum.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's certainly, it's, I don't know about urgent, but something we want to get done soon.
And that doesn't mean that it can't be done with our dollars, it's just we're waiting for the recommendation committee.
Okay.
And that was one of the ideas of the committee, was to, to figure out how much it's going to cost and then come before council and say, what can you do?
Okay.
Do you have an outside idea you're coming in for that review?
We do not.
Kevin, can you get me a ballpark on that as soon as you can find out? Because we're putting on our sponsorship brochure, a plea for money for the clock. And if we had some sort of a ballpark figure, that would help.
I think Mr. Rutgers is in on all of those emails now. If you want on that distribution, let's, I could put you on there.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
What happened with the land swap of the park property? It just kind of died. We filed a complaint on that, and now we're in common pleas court waiting for, I guess I should have reported on it. Sorry. The Ballantyne Land Swap, the three-quarters of an acre.
Did they forget where we were at?
Okay, where we're at is, basically, not to go through the whole thing, we had three-quarters of an acre. We wanted to do the land swap. There's some question in the language of the deed. I don't think it's legally enforceable, but I'm not going to roll the dice and tell the village, hey, it's a great idea, let's do the land swap. And then, you know, five years from now, some family member of the person that granted the property to us comes back and says, you know what, you're not using it the way I told you to. Therefore, we're taking 28 acres back from the park. Yeah, I thought we agreed, he agreed to pay the costs and everything. Right, and so what we've done is, we filed a declaratory judgment action in Union County, and there was a little bit longer delay, because we actually did find, we had to do some due diligence to determine the existence of any of the survivors of, of the original grantor we did in the Lima area. And so, we had to do, make a few phone calls, talk to some folks. One was a very nice elderly gentleman, and I'm sure he's going to be very upset when he gets a complaint, even though we've kind of tried to explain that this is just a declaratory judgment, we're not looking for money or anything, I'm sure. You know, there are some limitations on what I can do as far as contact I can have with him. But we did contact him, so we did locate some people, and we just, I think it was just today or yesterday or Friday, we filed a complaint in Union County. So, but yeah, we're not handling the costs and that. Hopefully, things will speed up quickly now with the court. Once we get going.
March 25th is the Durdechman fundraiser for the fireworks. So, we're also having our silent auction again, so if any of you have a cabin, a beach house, weekend boat trip, some tickets, or.
Got your kids.
Anything you want to donate, we'd love to have, love to have you come eat, love to have you come serve.
March 25th.
March 25th, I know you've been gone. And then afterwards, the Historical Society moved their meeting, so it's later that evening. So, you can come eat and then go to the Historical Society, where they will be showing my father-in-law's home movies of the Sesquencen, Sesquencen Tennial Parade. So, it's really neat to watch. So, it'd be a fun evening out.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, council, anything else? Anything to mention?
All right, thank you all. See you all on the 25th.
Yeah, the 12th of June.
Yeah.